Yeah, few deep breaths. This is definitely. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
I was just helping Rowan with his spelling.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Robert Woolsey. It's 6:35. You're listening to Raven Radio KCAW in Sitka. I'm going to be moderating tonight's KCAW election forum with candidates for Sitka School Board, Amy Morrison and Todd Gebler. We have received a few listener questions already by email tonight, but you can, we can still take more. You can send your questions to news@kcaw.org. You can also call us at 747-5877 and your questions will be relayed into the forum. You can also post a question on the forum thread on our Facebook page, which is Raven Radio. This is the second of two municipal candidate forums we're hosting on Raven Radio. On Tuesday night, KCAW's Catherine Rose had a conversation with the three candidates for Sitka Assembly. You can find a link to both these forums online at kcaw's electioncentral@kcaw.org or on the Raven Radio Facebook page. And again, that's also where we're streaming this program live now. The Election Hub also has pictures, bios, and position statements by the candidates written in their own words. Again, that's the KCAW Election Central online at kcaw.org. So now let's turn to our candidates for Sitka School Board. Amy Morrison and Todd Gebler are the only two candidates for two vacancies on the Sitka School Board. Barring a surprise write-in campaign, you'll both be taking three-year terms on the board. Amy, this will be your second term, and Todd, it will be your first. We'll run a three-minute clock for your responses mainly so we can get to all the questions with only two of you in the race. I don't think I'll be cutting anyone off. KCAW forums aren't structured as debates. If you want to challenge each other's ideas, that is certainly fine. Tonight, I think is a good opportunity for the community to see just what kind of board member you'll be and what our board will look like for the coming year. So Amy, let's start with you. Please introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in running for another term on school board.
Thanks, Robert. Yeah, I'm Amy Morrison, and like you said, I have been on the Sitka School Board for the last three years, and so I'm running for my second term. I've lived in Sitka for 25 years now. My husband Vaughn and I have together three daughters. We have our oldest, Ashlyn, is 21, and she is a senior this year at Boise State University. And she went through the Sitka School District for her entire career, or school career. And then we have two daughters, Riley and Chloe, who are both seniors at Sitka High School this year. And I work in insurance. I work for Daviesberry Insurance, which is based out of Ketchikan. And I'm running for the school board again, just to kind of create the continuity of what we've been doing over the last three years and bridging the gap with our new superintendent. One of the things I was mentioning to Robert a while ago was that in my three years on the school board, we've now had three superintendents. So I think it'd be nice just to have a continuity of the board in working with the new superintendent, specifically in the areas of the strategic plan, which we just started this past spring, and then also the financial budget side of things also. So I just look forward to serving again for another three years.
All right. Thank you, Amy Morrison. And I should mention that you're the current Sitka School Board President. Though the officers of the board will be decided by the board itself following the October 5th election. Todd Gebler, let's hear from you. Please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your interest in running for Sitka School Board.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. My name's Todd Gebler, originally from Pennsylvania, born, raised there. My wife and I, we moved here to Sitka in 1999 originally as healthcare providers. We were traveling nurses. I was a respiratory therapist at the time. I'm a registered nurse now. And that's how we originally wound up in Sitka with the travel assignment over at search. I'm running for the board, and for me, it's time for me to get involved. My son, he's eight, and he's at Keet now, and he's going to be in the, in the school system until he's a senior, you know? And I just, I just want to help and be a part of that. I feel the board's been doing a great job with all of the crazy things that they've been having to deal with. And I think they've been doing a really good job, and I just want to be a part of that. And I just think it's time to put back into the community.
All right. Thank you, Todd Gebler. You're listening to a live forum with candidates for Sitka School Board. If you have a question for these future board members, please give us a call at 747-5877. KCAW reporter Tosh Kimmel is standing by to take your call, and she'll bring it in to me. And you can also ask a question online by going to email news@kcaw.org or going to the Raven Radio Facebook page and post a question on this forum thread. And we do have a few questions. I wanted to start with one of my own, if you guys will indulge me. As Amy said, we were chatting a little bit before going on the air, and I mentioned that I've been covering the school board for a long time now. And I've always wondered why more people don't run for school board, because the school budget is as large as the Sitka General Fund, and the number of employees is roughly the same as the city. And the board makes huge decisions about, you know, funding community schools and libraries and hiring the superintendent, as you mentioned. You know, I've noticed that more people will apply for a vacancy on the board when one comes up than actually run for a seat. And I just wondered, I just wanted to get your thoughts on if you could sort of connect the dots about your interest in running for the board and why more people, you think, don't get involved as well. And since Todd's the newcomer, I think I'll, I'll give you this question first. Amy, since you've sort of been in the game longer, why, why doesn't the school board get more, attract more candidates at election time when so much is at stake?
Well, I think it's very intimidating to run, you know, a campaign for an elected position. And I think one of the differences between school board and assembly is people tend to look at our city assembly as more of a political position than the school board, which, you know, I, I am definitely drawn to that. But I think when you think about an elected official and that you, the fact that you have to run a campaign and, you know, put money into it and put a lot of time into it, it distracts people from wanting to do it. I also think that just the fact that there's so many hours and time that are put into it, and there's so much to learn. And that's where, you know, even just having three years in, I feel like I'm just starting to really understand some of the dynamics and the issues that face school boards. So the fact that we are volunteers and we don't get paid and we put a lot of our personal time into it is also a deterrent for people to run. And, you know, one of the things I've heard quite a bit is people really want parents on the school board that have kids in the school system. But I can see, especially if you have younger kids, you know, that could be a really hard thing to balance, because the school board is very demanding. If you're going to do a good job and really research the issues and stuff, it does demand a lot of our time. So I, I think that's another reason why maybe people are a little leery of running. But I hope we see more people running in the future, because it is obviously a very important job.
All right. Thank you, Amy Morrison. Todd Gebler, your thoughts on, you are somebody who has thrown his hat in the ring, but I gather it took a little bit of persuasion to get you to do it. And I just, you know, what sort of did get you over the hump and get you to sort of step up and make this level of commitment? And why don't you think more people tend to do it?
To be, to be perfectly honest, I was skeptical at first. I had to really do some serious thinking and I, a lot of friends that are teachers. I'm not a teacher. I'm not in education. So I have a lot of friends that are. And I spoke to a lot of friends and a good, good friend of the family was actually on the school, school board, and I spoke to her as well. And out of everybody that I talked to, nobody said not to do it. You know, they, they all, they gave me the, you know, the unpolished version, how it's going to be a big time commitment, you know? And it's, don't take it lightly, because like, like you said, there's some hard decisions. I mean, every decision is hard, and they're big decisions. And I don't know if people really associate that with, with the school board or not, but it's bigger than you think. And I quickly realized that after I started talking to people. And like I said, nobody said not to do it, you know, and no one said, Todd, run away. And I'm like, well, okay, I, the more I looked into it and the more I'm like, this is, this is something I can do. You know, I, I want to, I want to give back to the community. Rowan's going to be in the system for a long time. And, you know, now's the time, you know? So, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Todd Gebler. I do think that, yeah, a lot of, I've seen a lot of new school board members seated. I think it is a big challenge, but I also think that the district, it's a pretty well-supported board. The district does help out quite a bit. So it doesn't have to be necessarily fully intimidating from the get-go. We got our first question in from an audience member tonight. This is from Suzie. With declining enrollment and related budgets, what classes are available or should be available for students who are not college-bound? Now, since I made Amy take the last one, Todd, I'm going to put you on the spot first here. With, with declining enrollment and related budgets, what classes should be available for students who are not college-bound?
Right off the bat, I would say like, not every kid is, not every high school senior is, is set up for college. Vocation is, there's, there's other, there's other avenues other than college. Vocation is the one. Anything, anything related to a vocation like that, I guess welding, things like that. Exactly what class? I don't know. It could be really anything, anything vocational, anything that you can learn a trade from, you know, that you don't have to go to college for.
All right. Thank you, Todd. Amy, your thoughts on this question? With declining enrollment and related budgets, what classes are available or should be available for students who are not college-bound? And I think this questioner is trying to lump together two ideas that you're faced with declining budgets related to enrollment. You know, how do you sort of reprioritize funding to ensure that non-college-bound students are still, their needs are still addressed? If, sorry, listener for over paraphrasing, but that's where I think we are with this.
All right. Yeah. No, that's a great question. Um, like, like Todd said, I mean, we have, in our school district, we have probably the best CTE program in the state, career and technical education. And one thing that I think a lot of people don't understand is it's not just your shop and your construction and your metals, but we have other things like cooking. In our, in our cooking class, all the students receive their food handlers cards, which is, you know, great for going out and getting jobs. So we do have a lot of those opportunities available right now to students. And I know that high schools constantly, both high schools are constantly looking at ways of doing internships with students into other, you know, businesses in the community. So I would always support that. Fortunately, we have not had enough decline in our enrollment that we've had to make the tough choices of cutting any classes or programs in my time on the board. And hopefully we won't have to. We actually are at a place right now where enrollment's up a little bit from what we've expected. So that's a really good thing, and we're hopeful that with the new search hospital and the new Coast Guard ship coming in, that our enrollment will hopefully climb, and we will be able to maintain all the programs and possibly even add more in the next few years, which would be really exciting.
All right. Thank you, Amy Morrison, for your answer, and thank you, Suzie, for your question. If you have a question for the school board candidates, give us a call, 747-5877, or email us, news@kcaw.org. This question we got in advance, and Amy, it will go to you first. And I think you might have seen this one coming. FDA approval of the Pfizer COVID vaccine for children age five through 11 could be coming in the near future, making all school-aged children eligible for immunization. Should the district add a COVID immunization to its other required immunizations, including diphtheria, pertussis, tetanus, polio, measles, rubella, mumps, hepatitis A and B, and varicella? So the question is, should COVID immunization be required for all students in the Sitka School District as like these other vaccinations? Amy?
I do not believe that a COVID vaccine should be required for our students of any age or for our staff, for that matter. I think it is too new to, to make that kind of a call in, I would say, at least in the next year, but probably the next couple of years. I think one that you refer to, varicella, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. If I, if I'm not mistaken, that's the chickenpox one, which came out probably about 15 or so years ago. I don't remember for sure, but I can say as a parent, I was very leery about having my kid get that one when it was a new vaccine. So I mean, I don't believe in mandatory vaccinations in general, but certainly don't support the COVID vaccine. I would say at least in the first year until we know a little bit more about it.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Todd Gebler, the question is, FDA approval of the Pfizer COVID vaccine for children age five to 11 is coming in the near future, making all school-aged children eligible for immunization. Should the district add a COVID immunization to its other required immunizations? And there's a long list of immunizations that the district does already. Todd Gebler?
Right. It's, it's definitely a hot-button topic. And I, I would have to agree with Amy a little bit there. Mandatory things right now, maybe so, maybe not so much. It is, it is really new, really new. I think they just, they just kind of rolled out the idea recently, and it's not even been approved yet. But I would highly, I would highly encourage it, for sure. My wife and I, it's a discussion that we're going to have, and I can see how people would be wary about it, for sure. As far as mandating it, I would say no, but I would definitely, definitely encourage it, for sure.
Right. Thanks, Todd Gebler. You're listening to a live forum with candidates for school board here in Sitka, Amy Morrison and Todd Gebler. You can join our conversation indirectly by calling us at 747-5877 and posing a question or emailing one to news@kcaw.org. We've got another question just phoned in. This one is going to go to you first, Todd. This is from Becca. Becca asks, how would you go about strategic planning? And what do you see as weaknesses that could be strengthened through the process, and what do you hope will be accomplished? So Becca asks, how would you go about strategic planning, Todd, as a board member with the Sitka School District?
Strategic planning. I'm, I'm definitely the new guy. All right. I, I'm a nurse. I have healthcare experience. And with that, I have, I have people experience. I'm not an educator, so I don't have that teaching experience to fall on. And I'm not, as far as the budget goes, I'm not a businessman. I don't have that finance experience. But what I, what I, what I, I know I lack experience, but what I am confident and capable, very capable of doing is finding out the right answer. I don't, I don't have an answer for you as far as, as far as what to do with that, but I know where to find the answer. And I know that I definitely have a great community to rely on, Amy and the rest of the board. I, I just don't simply have an answer for you right now. I don't know. I don't know much about it.
That's fine, Todd. A year from now, you're going to be all too familiar.
Yes.
Amy?
It's going to be a running start. I know.
Amy, can you help Todd out a little bit in answering Becca's question? How does the board going to go about strategic planning? And what do you see as weaknesses that could be strengthened through the process?
Yeah, I definitely, sorry, Todd, I have an advantage over you on this one. So, so we've, you know, we, as a board, we have been talking about strategic planning since I joined the board, and I actually went to a conference on it my, my first year that I was on the board. So I've been deep into this process for three years now. We, we did decide to move forward with implementing a new strategic plan that started this past spring. John Holz, we hired, who was our interim superintendent, but he also is a facilitator for school districts for strategic planning. So we hired him to facilitate that. We got the ball rolling. We're now at the point where these plans have been identified, and then you create action plans to, you know, you take the strategic plan and then you create the action plan of how we're going to, what we're going to implement, the, the strategies that we're going to use to fulfill those plans. So we are, I would say, probably, I don't know, 25, 30% into the process right now. It's going really well. I would say the weaknesses that we should, that should be identified through it are just where are we not meeting the needs of our community in our school district? And, and that's where we started with this in the spring. I think we had around 50 people from all different parts of the community that came and helped identify that to come up with. I don't recall exactly how many plans they came up with, but I think there's seven or eight of them. So we should be identifying our weaknesses through that process. And then, I mean, the whole goal is to just have the best school district for our community and listen to the community, and, and that's underway. So I'm super excited about that. So I hope, I think that answered both parts of the question.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. And Amy, you'll have this next question first. This also just came in from a listener. This is from Ari. What are the current policies surrounding transgender children in the school district? And what is your personal stance on those policies?
Boy, that is a tough question. We do have a policy. We have a board policy. I cannot recite it word for word exactly what it is. But we, we do have a policy right now, and it's, it's kind of, I would say it's fluid and it's changing and being updated as necessary. We did just a month or two ago, updated a, one of our administrative regulations, which is the way that policies are implemented in the district. And it's, like I said, I couldn't tell you the exact verbiage of the policy, but we are trying to stay updated and current and be inclusive of all students and, and meeting all students' needs. And so the policy was updated in order to identify those needs. And it is on our school board website. I, like you said, I just couldn't tell you exactly word for word what it says at this point.
All right. Thank you, Amy Morrison. The question again, Todd, is what are the current policies surrounding transgender children in the school district? And obviously, you may not have fully researched that subject, but the second half of the question is, what is your personal stance on those policies?
Like Amy said, you, all, all the kids should be inclusive, and that, that, that should be, that should be current number one. As far as the policy goes, if Amy doesn't know, it's a rough hand, and I'm, I'm sure not going to know it. But again, I know I would know where to find it. It would be on, on the website, school board website. I, I would be inclusive about it. I would be definitely open-minded as far as that goes. Definitely supportive, definitely supportive of students that would want to go that route.
All right. Thank you, Todd Gebler, and thank you, Ari, for the question. The number to call is 747-5877 if you have a question for our school board candidates. I'll, we're close enough to the top of the hour that I'll go ahead and say that you're listening to Raven Radio, KCAW in Sitka. And I'm joined tonight by Amy Morrison, who is our incumbent school board president. Amy is running for a second three-year term on the Sitka School Board. Todd Gebler is running for his first term on the Sitka School Board. And barring any surprise writing campaign, both of these candidates will be seated on the school board shortly after the election on October 5th. But now I kind of see it as a job interview. If the community is listening and wants to get in some questions that they think will be meaningful later on as the board tackles a number of issues over the next year. You know, you can sort of, you can sort of, you know, show your cards now of what you might be interested in. So feel free to do so. Again, news@kcaw.org if you'd like to email a question or 747-5877. And KCAW reporter Tosh Kimmel is standing by to take your call. Until we get another question, I'll, I'll put one of mine forward. I just did a story on this. And Todd, you'll be first here to answer this question. The, the district's optional in-house coronavirus testing program caught positives in two classrooms in Keet Gushahine earlier this month, and the resulting quarantine of those classes enabled all other children in the building to stay in school. Additional positives were detected when the quarantined students returned to the building a few days later. And the quarantine was extended, but still, everybody, everybody else remained in school. I spoke with Frank Hauser, the superintendent, who said that only 20% of students are participating in the optional testing program so far. Todd, do you think the board should take any steps to increase the level of participation in this program, given the, I guess, what you would call a success this month in its intended purpose?
20%. I think, I feel, I feel that's pretty low. Not low, that's, that's not the actual number, but I feel like it, participation could be a little bit, could be a little bit more. I, I can't imagine if, if those strategies weren't in place, how bad it would be. The more, there's more testing now than there was last year, and it, it did its job. It did what was intended to catch, to catch the COVID before, before it spread, before it, before it became an increased problem. I, I, it's, it's working as advertised, I would say.
Todd, would you be interested in trying to step up participation somehow through any kind of board action? Or just let it sort of organically go the way it is now?
I would, I'm not sure how, how far the reach would go. I mean, again, I, I would, I would strongly encourage greater participation than 20%.
All right. Thank you, Todd. Amy, your, your question, again, the gist of it is, is that the Keet Gushahine, the testing program at Keet Gushahine, I think, may, might have saved us a lot of grief. Do you think the board should take any steps to try and increase participation in the optional testing program?
I, I don't think there's much more that the board can do. In order for any students to be tested, they have to get written permission from their parent or guardian. So it's not something that we can, you know, just require. The only exception to that is we can't require it for students that are involved in activities outside of school. So our student athletes and other extracurricular activities are required to do it. But the rest of the student population, we can't require it. I mean, my understanding is that from our legal counsel is that it's highly recommended not to have everyone, you know, not to make it mandatory, because we don't want to see ourselves in litigation over that. That being said, 20% seems somewhat low, but it's actually a fairly good sampling of the students. And it is in all of the schools. Just to be clear, it's not just at Keet. And we feel pretty confident that with that 20%, even though it would be ideal to have it be higher, that even at 20%, we are catching those cases. And, you know, like you said, it, this, the mitigations worked perfectly at Keet. We were able to identify those positive cases very quickly. We were able to quarantine those students in those classes. We were able to do class online for a couple of days. And, you know, I believe that they, they feel caught up and they're not behind, and the rest of the school got to go on as normal. So even though 20% may not sound ideal, it is working and it is effective. And so at this point, I, I think we should just kind of stay status quo with how we're doing that. But that being said, for anybody listening that hasn't signed a waiver for your student to get tested, I highly encourage more and more students to do that if, if possible.
All right. Thank you, Amy Morrison. We have a question just in from a listener. And Amy, this will be, I think, this will be your question to answer first. This is from John. Because the marijuana excise tax did not make it on the ballot this year, how do you plan to fund student activities in the future? Thank you, John, for your question. Amy, it'll go to you first for a response.
This is an interesting question, because one thing that a lot of people don't realize is the school district has zero capability of raising funds. We get funding from the state. We get funding from our local city municipality, and we get a tiny, tiny bit of funding from the federal government. We do not have the ability to implement taxes or, you know, any other measures to raise money. So we gladly will work with the city assembly, because they are one of our primary funding sources, to develop ways and, you know, work together for them to. And in the past, they have provided the funding for our student activities, and we are incredibly grateful for that. for them to, and in the past, they have provided the funding for our student activities and we are incredibly grateful for that. So unfortunately, the question falls more to them of if the marijuana excise tax didn't go through, then how are they going to find the funding for it? Because all we can do is go to them and ask them for the money and explain why we think it's necessary and important. But again, we don't have the method to actually raise those funds ourselves or implement anything. So um, hopefully together we can come up with a way of finding those funds again this next year.
All right. Thank you, Amy Morrison. Todd Gebler, your response to the question, because the marijuana excise tax did not make it on the ballot, how do you plan to fund student activities in the future?
Um, I think right off the bat, I, I would wonder how, how are they funded before? With the, where, where, where did the money, where did revenue come from there? I wonder, um, and again, this is my inexperience coming out. I, I would have to ask exactly where, where the funding comes from, because it, it does it come from the state, does it come from other agencies? I, I, I would have to dig down a little bit deeper to find out exactly where most of the funding comes from.
Uh, the city, city Sitka, uh, provides non-instructional funding. I forget the exact amount, but it's a pretty large chunk of money in addition to its money. So it's non-instructional plus instruction and the non-instructional budget is, um, I, I think is where the marijuana excise tax would have been applied.
Correct.
Sure, to become an, a ballot question. Anyway, thank you very much, John, uh, for your question. Um, if you have a question for our candidates, again, the number to call 747-5877 or email us, news@kcaw.org, or you can post a question in the F, uh, the thread on this, uh, on the Facebook thread at Raven Radio Facebook page where we are live streaming this program. Um, Todd, you'll have this question. And, um, again, you weren't, you weren't on the board when some of this went down, but but it is, it's got sort of broad implications too. Um, as of June 30th, the school district had $980,000 remaining. That's $2 million in CARES Act relief. And some of the expenses so far have been on, uh, a social worker and tech coach, a learning support coordinator, AmeriCorps volunteers, district equipment like phones and copiers, the summer school intervention program and better desks for the high school. So it's kind of a mix of equipment and temporary staff. Um, Todd, any thoughts on how you think the district should best apply this last piece of CARES Act funding?
I think, I think originally it should go, um, the, the best people to make those decisions would be, uh, the head of, the, the heads of departments, like the teachers would be the best way, but the head of maintenance, um, departments like that would be a great resource to find out, uh, what they need and where the money should go. Um, uh, just a knee jerk reaction on my part, uh, mental health. Um, with everything that's going with, it's going down with COVID, with the kids, there's bound to be tons of stuff that we're not seeing. Um, mental health, the aspect is, is important. It's, and there, there are, there are a lot of mental health professionals, um, in the district now, but there, there could always be more. And I think if there, if there was a surplus, which I don't know hardly if there's ever a surplus, uh, that extra money should go towards mental health, towards the kids in, in some aspect. It's, that, that's where I think it should go.
All right. Thank you, Todd Gebler. Um, Amy Morrison, uh, it's your question. I want to suggest that, that the motivation behind the social worker was mental health. So Todd is not too far off there. Am I correct?
Correct. Absolutely. Yes.
All right. So Amy, um, I'll, also, I'm not sure if, if additional that $980,000, some of that had been spent over the summer, but I know that uh, as of John Holst's last meeting in June, there was this, this sizable chunk of money remaining to be spent, uh, on, uh, relief expenses in the district. Have you got a sense of where you would like to see that money applied?
Um, yeah, I, I would say kind of what Todd said, he hit the nail on the head. Um, it, it's one of those things because the school board, we're not educators. We aren't in the school system. We don't see the needs on a day-to-day basis like our administrators and our teachers do. Uh, the approach that we've taken with all the CARES money we've received so far is really just listening to our administration and our teachers. And they've come to us with some fantastic ideas and ways to use that money. There are a lot of, um, restrictions attached to that money. We can only spend it in, in certain ways. And so they've been very creative and coming up with ways to use it that meet those requirements. And that's, I think we have, I want to say up to about two more years to use those funds. So I, I would agree with Todd. I, I will just wait and see what, um, suggestions our administration and our superintendent bring to us and be willing to listen to those and support them where they feel like those funds need to go. But I don't myself have any other ideas right off the top of my head. Um, mental health was obviously a huge one. And we were fortunately able to put money into a social worker at Pacific High School, which was a, a need that the board had been recognizing and trying to find funds for, for a long time. So we were very excited to be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Amy Morrison. Um, I have another question here that came in earlier and, um, it's related to our, um, our forum that was held earlier this week with assembly candidates. And Amy, you'll have the first response to this question. Uh, the assembly candidates were asked during Tuesday night's forum about introducing an indigenous land acknowledgement at the start of their meetings. The Sitka School Board has already adopted the acknowledgement beginning in October. Why or why not is this an important step for Sitka? Amy, your question.
I think it's an important step because we've been working so hard as a school board, as a school district, and I think as a community as a whole to unify people and bring people together. And this is just one way that we can do that. It's, um, it's acknowledging, you know, the land of the people that were here before us. And we obviously have a very large Alaska Native community, um, in, in Sitka in general, and also within our school district. And we want everyone to feel included and, and a part of that. And, uh, this just seemed like the natural thing to do to, to create that sense of inclusiveness, but also to just create a sense of community. Uh, we, we've been working hard with the tribal council and, you know, with the city just to, to work together as one and not be fighting against each other and, and working with common goals. So this was just another step in that process.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Todd Gebler, uh, your question, the Sitka School Board has already adopted an indigenous land acknowledgement. It'll start in October. Why or why not do you think this is an important step for Sitka?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a big sign of respect. Um, Amy said it too. Um, it, 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 there, there, there at the time, we, we, we do really need to get together, you know, and, and this we need to be inclusive, like Amy said, and it's, it, it just shows, shows respect, I guess you could say. And I, I, I guess I don't really have a lot of other words for it other than it's something that really, r- really should have been done maybe a long time ago, I guess. And I think the question is like, why not do it? You know, and it just, uh, a long time coming.
All right. Thank you, Todd Gebler. Uh, the number to call if you have a question for school board candidates, Amy Morrison or Todd Gebler is 747-5877. You can email a question to news@kcaw.org. And, uh, I'd love to get your question on the air. Um, we sent Amy and Todd, uh, a survey uh, to ask, so we could put forward a few sort of standardized questions that they could write answers to. I'm just gonna, I guess I'm going to give you guys a break and give you, uh, questions, some questions that appeared on your survey. So you might've already answered this. Uh, Todd, this will be your question. Do you support the push for culturally responsive education in the district? And what do you think culturally responsive education accomplishes?
Uh, it, it, it kind of goes, it kind of goes with the last question. It's, it, it's a, it's a respect. And we're, we're surrounded. This, this community is, it's, uh, I'm kind of drawing a blank. Robert, what's the question again? I'm sorry.
Do you support the push for culturally responsive education in the district? And what do you think culturally responsive education accomplishes?
I, I'm, I'm under the philosophy that you, you really, you need, you need all information that you could possibly get. If it's, it, 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 it just accomplishes, um,
Todd, I'm, no, I'm gonna,
I gotta get my thoughts together.
Yeah, I'm going to kick it to Amy and, um, because this issue has been before the board. And, um, if you want to chime in after Amy's spoken, I think that's fine with me. Uh, Amy, culturally responsive education in the district, what are, what are we gaining? Uh, by,
Yeah. Um, well, and I do obviously support it. Um, what I think we're gaining, what it accomplishes is there's a couple of different things, but just opportunities for all of our students. Um, we do have some great cultural, culturally responsive classes and in our schools that are available to all students, you know, not just students of a certain race or, you know, that belong to the tribe or something. So I, I think it creates opportunities for everybody. It creates awareness for everybody. Um, and it just broadens this idea of community. Um, I also think more specifically, it's going to help close our achievement gap, which is a little catchphrase that I personally sometimes have a lot of problems with. I, I think that that terminology gets thrown out a lot of times, but there's not a lot of meaning behind it. And that's actually one of my things that I really want to work on in my next, um, term on the school board is identifying what the achievement gap is because it can be defined in so many different ways and, and we can measure it in so many different ways. So if you look at it one way, we've worked, we've closed the gap somewhat. And if you look at other ways, we haven't. And I, I really want to be very specific about it. And since this has been a board goal for, I know, Robert, you probably know better than I do, since you've been doing school boards for a long time. Um, it's been a board goal for a really, really long time. And I think the cult, culturally responsive education ties directly with that and will help us in identifying those gaps and closing those and, and really getting that achievement there that we've been wanting to do for a long time.
All right. Uh, thank you, Amy Morrison. Uh, Todd, do you want to take another swing at it? Again, it's like strategic planning. This is something that'll be your daily vocabulary a year from
I know. It's, it's, it's very clear. My inexperience is just, is just oozing out of here now. Um, being all-inclusive, you know, and I really, uh, it, 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 it benefits everybody. It benefits, um, it, it'll be, it'll benefit my son. He starts learning about other cultures and I just, I, I just like the fact that he can learn about the Klinka culture. He can learn about other cultures and not just, not just one culture, but to be multifaceted like that. I, 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 I do enjoy that fact. And, and I think everybody's going to benefit from that. Um, we're all included. I mean, my, my son, my neighbor's son, everybody's son. Um, like I said, what I tried to stutter earlier was, uh, wh- why not do it? You know, it's, it, it, it's, it seems like it's just going to benefit everybody.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely in a u- unique position in this community to kind of embrace, uh, a really, you know, diverse educational sort of holistic perspective that, um, certainly taking advantage of it has been beneficial in lots of ways. So way to, way to recover, Todd. Good job.
Oh, my God. I'm just sweating.
You'll nail it in three years when you're running again.
Oh, yeah.
I should, uh, I should let everybody know that, um, uh, you're listening to, uh, a live forum with candidates for school board, Amy Morrison and Todd Gebler. Uh, we'd love to hear your questions, 747-5877 or email us, news@kcaw.org. And in our pre-interview before going on the air, I said, uh, I didn't want to, I didn't want people to, um, think that running for school board was something outside their grasp, but there is a huge lot amount of information to know. There's a lot that, that the district is involved in, a lot of these sort of, um, uh, programs and, uh, educational philosophies and a lot of the collaborations within the community are, that's really pretty extraordinary. So, um, uh, Todd, even just the fact that you're here, uh, taking these questions uh, significant. And I think a lot of people appreciate the fact that we have people willing to serve on this board because as Amy stated very beginning, there is more to it than meets the eye. So, um, sorry to make you sweat there a little bit, but like, you, uh, you didn't,
That's perfectly fine. You know, I'm, I, I made the decision and with, with my, with the help of my wife, because it's, I'm not going to be able to do this by myself. I, I, I'm all in. So this is, uh, my, my inexperience is definitely there, but, um, you know, I'm confident and capable of finding the answer and I, that, that I will promise.
Okay. Um, moving on with, uh, questions that have come in earlier, um, Amy, this question will be for you. Uh, enrollment increased significantly in the district's REACH homeschool program in 2020, I think as a result of the pandemic. Do you see advantages in maintaining a robust homeschool program in the district even after the pandemic ends?
Yes, absolutely. And that's one of the things that is top priority for the school board. And I know our administration and our superintendent, um, we were very fortunate to have a local homeschool program to meet the needs of families last year that didn't feel comfortable sending their students to school. We, we still have some of those families in the program. But one thing a lot of people don't realize too is you can have kids enrolled in the program part-time too. So if they just need to do math or they just need to do science or whatever, they, they can do that. So it really meets the needs of all the families in our district. And one thing that I think John Holst coined the phrase shop local, and, uh, this really does apply, well, he didn't coin the phrase, but when, when it comes to local public education, um, it is very relevant, shop local, because our local REACH program does provide anything that any other homeschool program in the state offers. So it's, it's been really great, um, awareness of the program through, through COVID. So really excited that that's grown.
All right. Thank you, Amy Morrison. Yeah, John Holst did coin shop local, but he, he did apply it to the, to the Sitka School District because there are, um, a lot of competing alternatives. And I'm betting that anybody who's got school-aged children in your social media, you're probably getting in your feed lots of ads for, you know, online schooling everywhere in Alaska and elsewhere too. So, uh, anyway, um, Todd, your thoughts on, uh, homeschool? I want to say that REACH, um, REACH went from about an enrollment of 20 to an enrollment of over 80, maybe in, into the nineties. Uh, Amy, you're shaking your head. Yes, nodding, yes.
That sounds about right. Yeah.
Pretty significant increase. Um, and some more resources in the district were applied to additional staffing and so on. Todd, do you think that, that there are advantages in the district to maintaining a robust homeschool program even after the pandemic ends?
Yeah, I think it gives, it gives people, um, gives people more options. Um, yeah, like you said, shop around. It, it, um, meets the needs of other, of other families. Yeah, it's, so some, some families aren't, um, are, are set up for, for public schools or don't time-wise or it is, it, it increases, increases options. And that's, that's just a good thing.
All right. Thank you, Todd. Um, Todd, you'll be the first to answer this question. This just came in from Mike. Uh, Mike asks, uh, there is a national and statewide teacher shortage. What can the Sitka School District do to set itself apart from all competing districts to attract quality teachers for its open positions? And, uh, Todd, I imagine there's sort of a parallel in your life as healthcare providers, you and your wife can go anywhere. Um, at, for teachers, what can Sitka School District do to set it apart, set itself apart from the competition and attract quality teachers?
I think, uh, there, there is a parallel there. And I, 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 I might have a little, might have a little more, uh, a little more grasp on this, but uh, get, getting people to Sitka is not, not the problem. Um, it's retention is the problem and competitive salaries could be, um, one of the, one of the main issues there. I'm not exactly sure what the, what the district or what the average pay for our teachers are now, but But getting people here isn't a problem. But then there's housing and there's the cost of living, everything that comes with living here in Sitka. They get here, you know, they 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 spend a year and they and they love it. Then winter comes and they get a little you know, not this isn't so good. And then they leave and they can go find another job down south, making more money. And maybe competitive salaries would be the answer with that. Not 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 incredibly crazy, just competitive to where to where, you know, the the beauty of Sitka would be would be just that much to just to keep them, keep people retention to keep people here.
All right. Thank you, Todd Gebler. Amy Morrison, your response to the question, what can Sitka School District do to set itself apart from all competing districts to attract quality teachers during what is a national and statewide teaching shortage?
Yeah, this is definitely an issue that has not affected Sitka so much in the last few years, but we're definitely starting to see its impact now. I do think that competitive salaries is probably our number one problem. Right up there is the retirement program and teachers in Sitka and all over Alaska are part of the state retirement program. And one of the things that we do as school board members is go to Juno and and talk to legislators and talk to them about, you know, issues like these and and trying to get their support on on that level for increasing our retirement. That is one thing that really fell away with COVID is we weren't able to go over to Juno and do the lobbying that we have been able to do in the past. But it's something that every time we go over there, we're we're talking to our representatives about that. So I'd like to keep plugging away at that. I was doing the math real quick on my calculator here. Competitive salaries is a huge issue. Right now, we have about a 19 to $20 million budget and about 80, 82% of that is our salaries for our staff. So that is the majority of our budget, which puts you in about the 15 to $16 million range. So if you think about even a 10% increase in staff pay, you're talking about one and a half million dollars, which is a huge chunk of change. And like I stated before, our funding comes from the state and from our local municipality. And we simply do not have the ability to to provide those kinds of increases with the funding that we're getting right now. So whatever we can do to get more funding to our schools is going to be critical in order to increase our salaries because Alaska teacher salaries are not competitive with the rest of the country right now. One thing where Sitka is incredibly fortunate is a lot of our teachers were born and raised in Sitka and went through the Sitka School District, and they simply just love our school district. And they they come to work every day and do the jobs that they do because they love it. And it's not because of the pay. But we've got to be able to pay them enough to live in Sitka, which is getting more and more unaffordable by the day. So it, this is going to be a real problem for us and a real problem for our district here shortly if we can't figure out a way of increasing those salaries and also coming up with some better options for affordable housing and making Sitka more affordable too. And this is one of those issues where I was talking about earlier, where we really need to work with our local Sitka Assembly to to come up with some solutions for that.
All right. Thank you very much, Amy. Let's see, Todd, you already took that question, correct?
Yeah.
So I think we have, we have time for one more question, then we'll go to to just closing remarks from you both. And just in in that last question, you you touched on a lot of issues that were covered in some of these other questions, but there was one here that I've never asked in a forum before, and I'd like to roll it out for you. Amy, it'll be your question. I have heard of this issue. I have heard it discussed, but it's never been in a forum, I don't think. The sports rivalry with Mount Edgem adds some energy to competition between the schools, but it, does it ever go too far in creating negative feelings? What are some ways the district can reassure Mount Edgem students that they're welcome members of the community? Amy Morrison.
Can you read the last part about what's a way that?
What are some ways the district can reassure Mount Edgem students that they're welcome members of the community?
Okay, thanks. Um, I have two daughters that are actively involved in sports and having Mount Edgem being in our same division and being you know, right down the street is obviously a huge advantage for us because all of our sports teams get to play Mount Edgem on a regular basis. I've, you know, there's obviously your natural rivalry. I've never seen anything that was inappropriate or that seemed divisive between the two schools. So I I'm glad to say that that doesn't seem to be a problem. I do know, again, pre-COVID, that there were a lot of efforts made by the high school to do some joint events such as school dances and things that were included inclusive of both schools. I think a lot of that fell aside for the last couple of years, but I hope we can continue to do those kinds of things. And I think you know, anyone on the school board or in our school district would do anything they can to to support that and to encourage Mount Edgem students to be a part of our activities and and vice versa. But from what I've seen, it's it's been a very healthy competition.
All right. Thank you, Amy Morrison. Todd Gebler, your question, we've got a, an active sports rivalry with Mount Edgem and Sitka schools, but could the board or the district also take steps to create to make sure Mount Edgem students feel welcome in the community?
Yeah, I don't and again, this might be my ignorance, but I I don't know if there it it seems like a just a healthy rivalry to me. I don't know if there is this undertow or a animosity or or anything like that. So I don't, I don't know. I don't, I didn't realize there was a problem.
All right. Thank you very much, Todd. That brings us to the the end of the time we had set aside for questions. I wanted to invite the candidates to just make a final pitch for voters on October 5. And since Amy got the ball rolling at the beginning of the forum, Todd, I'm going to let you go first now. Todd, some concluding remarks for our listeners.
Well, thanks for staying and listening, for one. It's it's apparent. I'm I'm definitely the new guy. And I said earlier, I'm a nurse. I have healthcare experience and I have people experience. And being a nurse, nurses tend to be selfless, you know, they they really don't think about themselves unless you're thinking about other people. And I I like to think that's me too. And it's, I I I want to give. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm I'm running for a school board too, is I want to, I just want to give back to the community. It's it's time, it's time for me to get involved. And it's something that I want to do for my for my son and or my neighbor's son and just everybody else. Because it's it's gonna, it sounds corny, kind of a cliche, but our kids are going to be they're going to grow up in front of our, you know, snap of the finger. Rowan's going to be a senior and he's going to be he's going to be part of the part of Sitka. He's going to be part of the working, working group. He's going to be part of, it's going to be part of everything. And I I want to be part of that. And I want to steer him in the right direction and steer other kids in the right direction as well.
All right. Thank you, Todd Gebler. Amy Morrison, your final thoughts?
Um, I guess I would just say thank you to everybody that's believed in me and given me the opportunity to be on the school board these last three years. And I do look forward to continuing to serve. It is truly an honor. It is, it's a lot of work, but I've I've told quite a few people, and I don't know, maybe I said this three years ago, but when I ran three years ago, my oldest daughter, Ashlyn, had just graduated at Sitka High School. And I just looked back at her 13 years that she was in school and the teachers and the staff and the administrators, it made such a huge difference in her life and and who she was. And I wanted to be a part of that. And I didn't really know what that meant. You know,